Okay. Good evening. What's the date today?
Fourteenth.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December fourteenth Rhinebeck Town Special Board Meeting. When everybody could sit. I present this to the class in the United States of America to the Republican Party and National Foundation under God and in this world, whatever it is you have to support. We're here for a couple of things. First is I'd like to make a motion for our Town Rhinebeck Compensation and Benefits Manual draft, December 12th, 2016. May I have a second?
Second.
This is something that we've workshopped and we had a meeting on it two days ago, our final meeting. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. I just want to make sure, one, I understand it, and two, I have some language. My understanding is that if somebody retires before 1-117, the retiree and the spouse are coverage, are covered for medical, but coverage for the spouse stops when the retiree dies. And the town pays the cost of supplemental Medicare and reimburses for Part B. Is that...
Correct.
My understanding is correct, Michael?
What page is this on, Michael? It is on Part Six, Page One.
Well, I'm trying to multitask. Are you trying to send this out?
No, I think it's a function of when they were hired, Joe.
No, no, Joe's correct. The retirees that retired before January first, 2017, if you look on Part Six, Page Two.
Part Six, Page Two?
Yes.
Yep.
The other tiers are by, are by hire date.
Okay, you're right.
Well, yeah, because on six-two-four, that's all past. There's no future there.
Right.
Right? And then on six-two-five and six-two-six, there's future. So then it's based on your date of hire.
Okay, now, the second bucket is if they were hired before 1-1, 2003, only the retiree is covered. The town pays the cost of supplemental Medicare and reimburses, reimburses just the retiree for Part B.
Well, it depends. That's if they're over age sixty-five.
If they're fifty-five and they retire, we pay full medical, full...
Right, okay.
Until they go on Social Security, I mean, until they go on Medicare, and then it's full supplemental, full Part B for the employee.
Correct.
Right. And the retiree must have twenty years of medical benefit eligible coverage to get this benefit.
And be sixty-two, or have thirty years and be fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Yes.
Okay. And then if they're hired after January one, 2003, the retiree only gets a ledger amount, and they get the medical insur, they get medical insurance, and the ledger account is used to pay the cost of the insurance and after sixty-five, the supplemental Medicare. And also, the ledger account is used to reimburse the retiree for Part B.
Not Part B, is my understanding.
The answer would be not Part B, because again, what this is doing is this is a piece, a bit of money that is being used for the premium. Part B is deducted from your Social Security check and...
It would be a reimbursement.
It'd be a reimbursement.
So it does not reimburse for Part B. It pays for supplemental only.
Where's that language that says it's not reimbursed for Part B? Because I'm looking at six-point-two-point-three, which says the town will reimburse an eligible retiree.
Well, it says arguably they could use it for their Part B, but that's just going to delete their bucket of money towards the premium, so...
Is six-point-two-point-five, we, does it say Part B in here as well?
Part B, Part B is a premium. Well, first of all, see, see, again...
Wait, Michael, wait a second. What is Part B referred...
Go back to six-two-three.
I'm sorry, six-two what?
Go back to six-two-three. Because again, things get mixed here. We're talking about premium in six-two.
There may be issues there.
Just exaggerate this, okay?
Wait, before...
Six-two-four, six-two-five, six-two-six deals with premium. It doesn't deal with Part B. It deals with premium.
Okay.
Now, go back to six-two-three. That deals with Part B. The town will reimburse an eligible retiree and the retiree's spouse for the cost of the Medicare Part B premium. So six-two-four, six-two-five, six-two-six doesn't deal with Part B. It deals with the premium for either the plan pre-sixty-five or the supplement post-sixty-five. So when you bring Part B into it, you're mixing...
So, okay, so...
You're mixing vegetables.
So, but you agree that for somebody who retires after January one, or hired after January one, 2003, the ledger account could be used to reimburse Part B?
No, it's separate. From Part B's being reimbursed under six-two-three.
Forget about what section.
No, I'm not forgetting about it.
Things are reimbursed under, you're saying they're not reimbursed?
Joe, Part B is reimbursed under six-point-two-point-three for retirees, period.
And who's entitled to reimbursement?
All retirees under six-two-three.
No matter when they were hired.
The town will reimburse an eligible retiree and the retiree's spouse for the cost of the Medicare premium, Part B.
So either, so they can be reimbursed out of the bucket of money?
No, it's separate. The town reimburses you, period.
What he's saying is there are two reimbursements. One is for Part B, that's its own. Everybody...
Who you are.
Who is eligible for Part B reimbursement?
All retirees.
Everybody, all retirees, that's what he's saying.
Six-two...
That's a separate thing.
Six-two-four, six-two-five, and six-two-six does not deal with Part B.
I thought you told us that we were not doing Part B because no one gets Part B.
No, no, originally, I was talking about that not be reimbursed, because that's, unless you're under NISH, people don't reimburse Part B anymore. But you wanted to do that, so Part B's being reimbursed for under six-point-two-point-three, Part B is reimbursed.
I thought that was still a question.
No, the paragraph, six-point-two-point-three, look at the text.
Good.
Second paragraph, when the retiree, so first of all, first paragraph...
Listen, I'm fine with it, but that was not my understanding. My understanding was that no, that everybody in the town pays for his or her own Part B.
Michael had suggested that. That's not, that's not the case, but Michael had suggested that. I actually agree with you.
Because we even talked about...
He was saying that in private sector, like, everybody pays for their own Part B, like, it's unheard of not to pay for your own Part B.
I'm fine with reimbursing the employees, but we left here saying that we were only reimbursing the second-tier employee, and we were only paying for Part B for somebody hired before January one.
And not the spouse, correct?
Not the spouse. For anyone hired after January one, 2003, they were, they were...
Tell me, tell me what to do.
Let me, just let me finish. This was my understanding, and you guys tell me. Anyone hired before January one, 2003 was getting the employee-only, all supplemental and Part B paid for by the town. Anyone hired after that date goes into the bucket of money, and the bucket of money is only for supplemental, not for Part B reimbursement. That was my understanding.
I thought we wanted it to be fifteen thousand dollars for all the employees.
Yep.
Is that right?
No, and the already-retired employees don't change.
Right.
They don't change.
I know, but remember, it was only fifteen thousand, remember Joe saying, it's only fifteen thousand dollars, why not pay it? And we, I thought we agreed to that.
No, that was for the...
So I actually thought it was still a little bit up in the air.
Okay, here's what I'm going to suggest doing. Look at your six-point-two-point-three, second paragraph, last sentence. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna move that. It's gonna get moved over to premiums as a second sentence.
Michael, before you move it, what are, what is the answer? What are we agreeing, so, before you...
We're agreeing now to reimburse everybody's Part B, except for the spouse, right? No, spouses are not covered anymore.
Okay, so here's what I mean, that's why I'm going to move things. So go to six-point-two-point-three, take that last sentence.
Yep.
So, take your pen, and that's gonna get moved. And it's gonna get moved three times. All right, so take that last sentence, you got it?
Yep. The town will reimburse an eligible retiree and the retiree's spouse for the cost of the Medicare Part B premium.
We are not...
Okay, so, so...
It doesn't get moved three times. It gets moved once.
No, it's gonna get moved three times, because I want to be clear about things. So, on six-point-two-point-four, that's gonna be placed right there. So, six-point-two-point-four is gonna have a new last sentence that says that exact thing.
But I thought we weren't paying for spouses.
Well, that's for people who have already retired.
Exactly.
That's right.
Six-point-two-point-five does not get that.
Well, he's gonna modify it to just say, for the retiree.
Okay.
So, it'll say, the town will reimburse for the retiree...
Oh, just for the retiree.
And then I'm even gonna use the word "only."
Yep, for, right, right.
So, we have it, so...
And then, and then, now you have to tell me what to do on the bucket of money, though I can say that the Part B will be reimbursed for that, retiree out of the bucket of money.
So if they, if people want to, you're saying if people want to use their bucket of money for this, they can, correct?
Yeah, so I would put in there, an employee may use the ledger account for Part B reimbursement. Yep?
Yes.
So that will say, the town, the retiree...
I don't care substantively, you know, it doesn't matter to me, the whole thing is irrelevant, because it's all gonna change at some point, but, so, I just want to make sure...
How do you mean it's all gonna change?
In such negotiations?
I think after the union negotiation, it's all gonna change.
If there's a majority of the board to change it, this could...
Yeah, of course.
I think that's a wild statement.
But, you know, we'll see. You asked me, all I want to make sure is it's technically correct as to what we're doing.
I'd like to read back that last sentence.
Okay.
Okay, now, everybody knows what I did to six-two-four, right?
Yes.
Everybody knows what I did to six-two-five?
Yes.
Okay, so six-two-six is a little bit different. The sentence there, last sentence of first paragraph, "The retiree may use the ledger account for reimbursement of the cost of the Medicare Part B premium."
Okay, now, on six-two-two, I think you need a lead-in saying, except as set forth below, and in six-point-two-five and six-point-two-six, because it's ambiguous as to whether the spouse is covered, but they're not covered under those two sections, so that you can't read six-point-two-point-two as giving the spouse something when those other sections take it away. So I'd say, except as set forth below, which is the, after they die.
But the spouse can be on the policy, we're just not gonna pay for it. This is coverage, not...
Yeah, right, but what does that have to do with the...
I thought six-two-two was about coverage, not about, about medical benefit coverage.
I think you keep confusing coverage with policy, and they're two different things.
Uh, yeah, but...
It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to put that preposition in.
I, yeah, I, I think you may avoid a problem later on if you have that language.
All right. What you gonna say?
Except as set forth below, and in section two point, six-point-two-five and six-point-two-point-six.
So, Joe, you just guessed, except as set forth below, and, and then reference those two subsections?
And in six-point-two-point-five and six-point-two-point-six.
Okay, so I put that preposition right at the very beginning of six-two-two.
Yep, and I think I would also put it at the beginning of six-point-two-point-three.
No, because that's just saying what plan is there.
I, no, that's plan, not coverage, Joe.
Well, but the second paragraph of six-point-two-point-three deals with spouses.
Well, I have, as the case may be, does that, I use the word, as the case may be, there may not be an eligible spouse. So when the retiree, or the retiree's eligible spouse, as the case may be, meets the eligibility requirement.
I'm not sure what you're saying, Michael. Are you suggesting some language someplace?
No, I, no, I have the words, as the case may be...
Where?
In that second paragraph.
Oh...
Six-two-three.
Oh, as the case may be, well, you know, I guess what I would say is when the retiree or the retiree's eligible spouse, if covered, comma, as the case may be, and put if covered.
All right. Nate, everybody?
Sure. I have a change or a question. Tell me when you're ready, Michael. Six-point-two-point-six, the second paragraph, the amount of a given retiree's account is based on, here it says, the total years of service. Are we saying full-time benefit eligible service, or is that said before this? If somebody's part-time for ten years, are we crediting them for the ten years of part-time?
Let's just double-check, because I put that in in a couple of places.
That's in eligibility, six-point-six-point-one.
It's, it's got full-time status and the, the total number of hours worked in full-time status is...
Yeah, you don't...
Okay, so we don't need to repeat it?
Well, is there any harm in repeating benefit, medical benefit eligible?
I'm always for clarity.
Multiplied times the total years of full-time, just repeat that language.
That's what you have, six-two-two.
Full-time medical benefit eligible service.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other con...
Yeah, just one other...
Are you ready?
Almost.
In the first paragraph in six-point-two-point-six, the second sentence starts off, from said account. I would get rid of from said account, that makes it look like a bank account, and I don't think you need it.
Just this...
Because you say, in the account at the end of the sentence.
I, I'm fine with that.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then I guess the last thing is underneath the chart, when the, I would say, retiree's account is depleted.
No problem.
All right, did we, now, Michael, just for clarification, we talked about five-point-two-point-two, and you said it's not necessary to tie this to somebody who's only working part of the, part of a year, because somehow...
They're not eligible.
That's implicit, no, they are eligible. We have a seasonal employee.
The collective bargaining agreement has nothing to do with this. That's under the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, okay.
Well, that's even under the consent award.
Yes.
Okay, that was the, I didn't remember that.
I think your operator's wrong in that case.
And we're not dealing with the Shelley thing that you brought up about borrowing or...
No, we're gonna work that out through, on a case-by-case basis.
But you can't...
You're talking about the phase, the phasing end of the accrual system.
No, for the, Michael is going to work with Shelley to set it up on an individual basis between...
The public insurance, and nobody gets on.
Yes.
Right, well, I have some language for you.
No, we're just, we don't want to put it in the contract, because it's a one-time transition.
This is not happening to, this is...
Is it one time, or has it come up every year?
One time, because it's loaded.
It's just the transitioning. You're going from a load system to an accrual system, so if anybody had plans, they might not have what they need at the time.
But doesn't it happen every time on the day after the anniversary date?
Anniversary dates, there are no such things as anniversary dates.
Julie, a pro-vacation day, time every week.
There's no beginning, there's no end.
They get a pro every week. It's continuous.
No. So there's never a zeroing out, there's never a, there's never an event, it's seamless from now on. Except for when you start.
Is there any other points?
I have nothing.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
So moved.
So I'll follow the same drills we did last time. I'll have a marked-up copy, and then there'll be a clean copy, and I'll send them both to John tomorrow.
John, we, we send it to Warren, too, please?
I think I have his email now from...
That's fine, we'll...
Okay. Also, I have John, just like I gave you last time, cover something.
We have a couple of more pieces of business.
Very good.
Thank you, thanks for all your work on Michael. I'd like to make a motion to, we have two payments that are hand-cut checks that did not make the voucher, so I'd like to get the approval to pay these tomorrow. So I'll make a motion for a voucher in the payment of three hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-five cents reimbursement to Raymond Link, and I will also make a voucher for stamp fulfillment services, personalized envelope programs, in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. One more piece of business, and then I'm going to request an executive session. Our, our insurance coverage is up, it's not a contract, because it renews every year, but the same coverage that we had last year didn't go up that much, it went up to, our total premium, this is for our municipal liability insurance from Neymar. So the premium went up, I don't know, two hundred dollars to fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. We budgeted sixty-four thousand dollars, so we have a savings there. Our rep came in and met with Shelley, I wasn't able to leave them meeting, but there are two additional coverages that we would like to take. So this is a change in our policy. And one is a computer fraud policy, which applies to money security and other property fraudulently transferred from our premises or banking premises to a location other than the insured premises or banking premises, and the coverage is...
I'm sorry, other than what?
Other than, let me just read it, other than the insured premises or the banking premises. So it protects our online banking worldwide, and we would like to take out a quarter of a million dollar computer fraud service for an additional hundred and eighty-four dollars a year.
Sorry, question?
Yes. The second that we want...
How much does it cover?
A quarter of a million dollars.
Don't we transfer more than that in January when we...
No, this is the highest coverage, so this is what we begin.
Oh, okay, so you can't get higher.
Right, so, and then we'd also like to get cyber liability, which is for network security liability and security breach, and it's for covers, but it's not limited to damages to third parties caused by a breach of network security and breach of privacy coverage, which includes damages resulting from alleged violations of HIPAA, state and federal privacy protection laws and regulations. It's an additional hundred and nine, hundred and nine dollars.
A couple hundred dollars.
I said, yeah.
There's a deductible, I'm sorry, it's seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, and there is a deductible, a thousand dollar per claim deductible with an aggregate limit on here, but I, I think we should...
I'm talking total for everything, both?
Well, I mean, add another thousand dollars to our, add another nine hundred dollars to our, add another seven twenty-six...
They save seven thousand dollars in the planning, I see, yeah, I see.
Seven twenty-six and one eighty-four, we're adding another nine hundred dollars, and we're still under budget on it. So I just would like your approval to add the cyber liability and the computer fraud liability. May I have a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't have no mode of thinking.
So moved, we'll add that coverage. I don't think I sign anything with this.
It's the opposite of what I need to consult into the device.
Actually, I'm gonna ask your approval to sign the revised contract reflecting this need-be. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, but thank you, so that's...
So this is why I voted coverage for...
This is our municipal general liability. I would like to make, we also...
Elizabeth, before you go into executive session, there's just one thing I wanted to say.
Yeah.
Is it out of time?
We have one more thing that I wanted to tell you. We have the, we have a pay schedule that we've been working on. I think the best thing is to make copies and go over the changes that we came up with today in our final tweak.
I just emailed it to everybody.
Yeah, I think it'll be hard for people to look at, email copies, so...
This is a proposed salary schedule?
Yeah, this is for the public, we have been...
Has it been sent out to us?
Yes.
Just now.
When?
Just now, Michael just sent it to...
No, no, there's one sent out earlier on.
I thought I saw a comparison, it was, we got one this week, I saw comparisons. I don't know, Lainey, did you get?
That doesn't sound familiar to me, not one that's at the...
This is, we need to workshop this. We have to workshop this in public, so I'm trying to push it along, so we can, if there's broad agreement, we can adopt it, if not, we can maybe schedule another meeting or pick it up in January. It would be easier if we adopted and go from there.
Just a reminder, at one of your earlier meetings, going back maybe two months ago, it was agreed that there'd be a work group, remember, this was, this was Ed, Elizabeth and Alan.
Ed got sick, and then Alan...
And so this is the byproduct of that work group.
Right.
So we've met, let's take a look at it.
Why not?
All right, can I ask for a brief recess?
Yeah.
Thanks, we'll be right back. Just want to preface what we're doing. We have known and discovered that we have a lack of parity within different departments in Rhinebeck on pay, and certainly within Rhinebeck's and other similar towns. We worked with Michael Richardson, our labor person, and Alan and I as a work group, and we compared Rhinebeck to about ten or twelve other towns. We also know that we have a parity issue, because our turnover has been immense. So the big drive of this was to bring up salaries to a fair market level. We put away some money in contingency to deal with this during our budget, and the schedule that we've come up with and that we're recommending is right up what we've put away. So it's certainly a good first attempt, and it's something we could look at in the year, you know, next year and the years to come. Alan and I believe this is a good first adjustment. We have, the people all on the top are there because they're, they're frozen. We are not considering them within a market adjustment for various reasons. We've broken out people, all of our employees, and this excludes the employees in the collective bargaining unit, into eight tiers.
Eight grades.
Eight grades. The second grade being where most of our employees fall and where our largest turnover is, and that's all of our secretaries and clerks to statutory boards or departments. So our recommendation here was to bring the wage up from twelve or thirteen or thirteen-fifty to fifteen dollars an hour. If you look at the first column, that's the rate that we have in the budget. The second column is what that rate comes to a year. The third column is what the new job rate for that tier would be. The fourth column is the employee's new rate. Sixth column is the aggregate market adjustment, and then the new total and the, and the increase. So you can see here that in some cases, we're talking about a three hundred dollar annual increase. So you can see here that in some cases, we're talking about a three hundred dollar annual increase. While some of the percentages may be big, for instance, we're taking someone who makes twelve dollars an hour and saying that job now is a minimum fifteen dollar an hour job. That's what we've done here. Our sec...
Please, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, do you have a question?
I have, I do. Do you have one too?
Same with secretary of ZBA?
No, go ahead. You go first.
I had secretary of ZBA twice.
Ed, you gotta talk a lot. I can't hear you.
He said there's secretary of ZBA twice.
Because...
That's just a cut and paste problem. Just for convenience, take the last one out because they're all the same thing, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's just when I, I was moving things around by rank. So that's, that's a typo.
Lainey, did you have a...
Yeah, my question is, I know that you said the top portion didn't have any changes. But my question is, because I feel like I've heard this for the past few years, the two clerks for the justice get paid very differently.
Yes.
Is that, is that them? Are you giving them different names up top, but is that the same position, court clerk and then clerk to the justice?
And the reason why we froze them is because we don't know what's going on there. These, we don't know and we haven't been able to sit down with them. P.S., everybody who didn't receive a market adjustment is receiving a raise. So people are already receiving a raise.
You do that in your budget.
So this is a marketed, we are not giving the market adjustments because we have to, first of all, we've said we're going to look at court consolidation. We need to talk to the justices about that. Second of all, clerk to the justice is a totally different job than court clerk.
Yes.
And we don't know if that's actually what's going on there. So we need a little bit more time to investigate this and we can deal with this in a second pass.
Okay, because I thought that the two clerks, like I thought Willie's clerk and John's clerk did exactly the same thing.
Yes, and we don't know why they have different civil service jobs and different rates, so we need to look at that.
We either need to do an audit ourselves or else have county committee do a desk audit.
So they're coded differently in civil service?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, clerk to the justice is an exempt position, court clerk is a...
I see. Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
So they've still received raises. We haven't, but it's more complicated and fraught areas, so we need time to deal with it.
Okay.
Yes, I just got this and I have had...
Joe, we don't have to make decisions today. This is a workshop.
Could I try to finish my sentence, please? But it looks like on this fifteen dollars, what you're doing is you're giving fifteen to everybody and there's no differentiation between somebody who is here for one month and somebody who's been here for three years.
That's correct. It's equal pay for equal work. Longevity has nothing to do with it.
I'm sorry, what?
It's equal pay for equal work by the job title. It's not about the person, it's about the title. Longevity has nothing to do with it. If you want to have a longevity program, then you can have a longevity program. But most compensation theories would say that length of service has absolutely nothing to do with the hourly rate of pay. In fact, if you're looking for indicators...
Within the concept of a market adjustment, we are not considering longevity. We're considering a market adjustment for the correct pay for the correct type of job.
Parity to other areas, right? Yeah, if you did a longevity, which again, a lot of, some, it's policy. Some places like to do longevity bonuses or stipends. Some think it's not appropriate, particularly in their defined benefit pension system. But nevertheless, those that do have it, you usually see it starting some incremental value around ten years. If you look at the data hire column on all your grade twos, nobody's been here ten years yet. So all of these individuals have been here less than ten years, so even if you did have a longevity scheme, it probably wouldn't be applied to these people.
It's all two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen. There's one two thousand twelve, there's one two thousand eight, sixteen and sixteen. This is where the huge turnover is. This is what crippled us last year.
It looks that way. I mean, that's, that's stunning to see that only one person has been here more than four years. That's amazing.
So Michael, you're suggesting on a going forward basis, we should not factor in longevity at...
Oh, not to the base wage rate. Again, on compensation theory, as a consultant in the public sector, I do not favor longevity because there is already a reward for longevity and it comes in two forms. One is the defined benefit pension plan. The longer you've been here, you're getting two percent more, two percent more towards your retirement. And the other one is...
That's a state plan, right?
Right, but again, if you want to reward people for being around, every year you stay around, you've just added two percent of your salary into your retirement. Nice. Right, so you have a mechanism that the state's taking care of for you. The other mechanism is somewhat normal, private sector, public sector also. The longer you're here, you get an extra week vacation. And that's nothing to sneeze at either.
Part-time people don't. They get six days off.
Right. But that's just on the, well, first of all, in part-time people, you rarely see a longevity scale. Rarely. But anyhow, if, I'm just, I don't advocate for longevity bonuses and awards in the public sector primarily because of that defined benefit pension plan. Now, some policymakers still like to give that recognition.
Still like to give what?
A recognition for longevity, for service rewards. And so if you did, I would say have a standalone. Now, there's different types. One is added to your regular pay. Another one that is becoming more and more common as they're getting rid of these other longevity schemes is, it happens on your fifth, but not your sixth, seventh, and eighth, like on your tenth. So on your fifth, you get a check. On your tenth, you get a bigger check. On your fifteenth, you get a bigger check.
Can I just...
It's not longevity, it's just a bonus.
We decided not to look at that with this. We decided that we were addressing wage parity.
Right.
And longevity was not a factor for us. And nobody has been here, only one person has been here more than, one person has been here more years and one person has been here three years.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to...
I didn't say where. I'm letting you know what the problem was.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Can I finish?
No, because I want to finish. I just want to understand what the theory is. I'm not disputing it. It's new to me and maybe it's fine, maybe it's not. I gotta think about it.
We have a technical issue here in town hall. We have no internet. Since we're networked together on a central server, we could not print anything out. So we made changes today and we were unable to print them out and give them to you. So Michael is going to take you through part four, assessor's aid full time. The new job rate is nineteen.
Where does assessor A?
It's, it's, it's tier, it's grade four.
So number four, eighteen, twenty?
Yeah, and again, I want to do one other thing here that you're not seeing right now. There is a grade three. It's not there, but it's blank. Because of the gap between fifteen and nineteen.
What was the grade three wage?
Yes.
Hourly rate? Sixteen, no, seventeen?
It hadn't been set. I would say that that would be a nice in-between number, wouldn't it?
What is grade three? Which one represents grade three?
We don't have anybody there.
You don't have one.
Hold on, hold on. We're placeholders. We have grade one there. See at the top, which is blank. We have nobody in that grade, but it is a placeholder in case we need to hire somebody.
At that level.
At that level.
At sub fifteen.
Yeah, can you just tell me what these grades represent? Because when you say grade one, grade two, like how do we know?
Grade one might be a, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, in general, you can kind of look at this, that the grade twos here are individuals who are basic, core clerk function, supporting somebody else above them. So, so in the case of the clerk of finance, those are individuals who better helping out Shelley and John with things like payroll and purchasing. So they're helping out another clerical admin person. So kind of they're a support, support person. When you look at the secretary of the highway, that person actually has kind of a finance function also. They're taking care of procurement, purchasing, and like out at the highway. Whether the typist, the building department, the assessor's aide, the secretary of the ZBA, they're again, they're supporting somebody else who also has a clerical support function. So these are support, support people.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask, what is typist building department? What does that mean?
It's the clerk to the building department. It's, these are civil service titles.
I see, okay.
So it's the person downstairs who is the clerk to our code enforcement officer.
Gotcha, okay.
Basically, yeah, basically takes care of all the paperwork.
Got it, okay.
Now, we, I would argue that you need to have an in-between step between the fifteen dollars and the nineteen dollars and that's where a grade three blank would be. Now you come in with the assessor's aide. Now, again, what would happen to it, grade three being filled, in some cases, the utilization of the secretary of the ZBA or the secretary of the planning board or even the typist in the building department might take on some administrative...
Huge role.
Roles. And you'll find that sometimes, not in your town, but sometimes you do. And if that started to happen, you might want to say, whoa, this person's taking on more than these core clerical duties and they're starting to take on some administrative duties. Grade three might be a nice placement for that person. They would get an upgrade.
Is that seventeen dollars?
Yes. So again, when you look at your grade four, let me talk on this. These are individuals that, as you can understand, the assessor aide is the full-time person that basically does the assessor's work because you have a still board of assessors. In another municipality, they might actually be your sole assessor.
Right.
This is eighteen dollars, but what you're saying, it's been changed to nineteen?
Yeah, yeah, for both, the grade four, the group suggested to go to nineteen dollars. So in the yellow box, nineteen.
We can't see. You just have to...
Just those two, number fours, correct?
Yeah, the new job rate is nineteen, of course, the new employer rate would be nineteen.
The market adjustment percentage?
The market adjustment would be nine point seven percent on the aide and two point one on the deputy.
Nine point seven percent here.
This is over here?
Yep. You're going to get this all in, two point one.
Now, the new totals for both of those are equal, thirty-four thousand five eighty, thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars even. The annualized increase that those two would experience throughout two thousand and seventeen for the aide, it would be three thousand dollars fifty-seven, so three oh five seven point sixty. And for the deputy, seven hundred nine, seven oh nine point eight.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the percentage on the deputy?
Two point one. Two point one. All right, now, the next grade, five, did not have any internal equity cohorts. And so that's where somebody has actually more of an administrative function and not too many clerical functions. So you see the difference there, they phased over. And that is at twenty dollars an hour and the group thought that that would stay at twenty dollars an hour for this...
For this round.
For this round. Six becomes a blank again because we have a gap between twenty and twenty-seven.
For instance, if we hired the deputy zoning administrator, that person could go, could be, could be considered a grade six.
Well, another example, let's say that you went out and hired a fire inspector. That might be a grade six. Okay, so now we get into the grade sevens and here is a change. The zoning and building inspector are both staying at twenty-seven dollars an hour. And just to say, you'll see over there where it says twenty-seven oh five above and twenty-eight fourteen above.
They're making above their grade.
Right.
Now, when you...
We're not giving them a pay cut, but if we hire a new person...
That's what they would get.
That's what they would get.
Now, a year from now, when you do your two thousand eighteen budget and you, I assume, apply a raise to the grade, the rising tide will raise that ship.
Yes.
It probably won't catch up with the twenty-eight fourteen person. That will still be an above person. Okay, so the change here though is the group said that the town clerk, tax collector that you see there as a grade eight should be placed at a grade seven at twenty-seven dollars. So that grade seven town clerk and tax collector would be at twenty-seven dollars.
It's grade seven?
Yep. The...
What, you're talking about grade seven or eight?
No, you should change it.
This becomes...
Change it to seven, is that...
This is becoming the seven.
It's twenty-seven dollars. It's seven?
Yes.
And the market value, the market adjustment value is fourteen point seven percent. That brings the annualized rate, now this is a twenty eighty person, this is a forty hour person. So the annualized rate is fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars even. So that's an additional seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, two, seven two one four point nine nine above what was budgeted.
Let me just make sure I understand that. We're going from forty-eight to nine forty-five to fifty-seven, is that what you're saying?
Fifty-six, one sixteen.
Fifty-six, one sixteen?
That's correct, and that's a fourteen point seven adjustment.
The addition is seventy-two.
I just want to know what the total is. So that would be all in because now that person collects various...
No, the stipends are still...
So this is total.
That includes the registered income.
But not the, not the...
Includes tax collect...
It includes, it includes a...
It's a total all in.
Yes.
And same thing with office manager. I don't know what other little thing.
Joe, just for, so we're not missing things, if you look back up to the deputy town clerk, those two stipends are not being rolled in because that person is not becoming salaried. Your town clerk and your office manager remain salaried employees, so that's why they all just roll in.
Right, but now in our budget, they get different amounts by function. Are we going to get away from that and do an all in?
Maybe next year. I don't know. You don't have to. How you fund this amount is really up to you. You can do that by more than one line.
But the intent is, this is a total.
Yeah. And then again, when you do your budget, you can fund that total through more than one line if you want to.
Is the office manager grade seven?
Grade eight.
Oh, that's the only...
Stays a grade eight at thirty dollars an hour.
Okay.
Now...
A woman at the boot, the town clerk is grade seven?
Yep.
And the office manager is grade eight?
That's correct. Under this...
Why? Why? Why is one going to seven and the other stays at eight? They're both full-time people.
It was too, it was, it was too much to, look at where a grade, look at where a grade eight would have made this. It was too much, sixty-two, four. It was too much to, it was...
But she's at the grade eight and it's fifty-four.
She's a, she works, she's on a thirty-five hour, we're on a forty.
This is forty, okay.
We were trying to, yeah, it's a decent amount of action.
So it's the hourly difference?
It's still not market rate.
They're both still, can we, can I, can we move conversation? These people are still not making, I believe, our office manager, bookkeeper to the supervisor and our clerk are still way below market rate.
Yep.
Yeah.
However, we did two things for our full-time salaried employees that are, we had to start somewhere.
You know, my question has to do with the fact that I thought that the town clerk's position would be the number eight and the office manager would be number seven, or that...
No, no. Office manager is Shelley is the bookkeeper to the supervisor. She runs the place as the dark clerk.
That's what I mean. I see them both on the same, at least the same...
This is all we could do this year. We will have to address it again next year. These two people compared to Red Hook, Hyde Park, Polly, you know, Marple Town.
I don't have any problem with this out. I just thought they should be at the same level. But I get it. I understand what you're saying.
We put aside about twenty-one thousand dollars and we had to figure out how to use it. This is as much as we could come up with. We couldn't do the bigger, the bigger jump for the town clerk and the office manager. We also gave considerations of the insurance rate being lowered, so there was a little bit there. I think in the, the group's head, the thing that we had to deal with first and foremost was the, you know, area two because the turnover has been brutal.
Is the total of twenty-four, two seventy-five, that's, that's off?
Let me give you, let me give you a new number.
What is it?
Just under twenty-one.
It's twenty-one?
No, no new number because I had a double entry there on the ZBA secretary.
Oh, okay, so it's about twenty-one?
The roll-up number now is nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Lower right-hand corner, the most lower...
Total increase to the budget is nineteen thousand...
Four, nine, one. So those are the new dollars. I believe you budgeted twenty-some?
Twenty-something.
So, so again, I think Elizabeth said it correctly, that this, for some position, I would argue, gets them to market rate and others, it's a little shy, a little bit on the top side. But yet, you did noble effort to spend twenty thousand dollars to try to get equal pay for equal work established.
So we're going to get a revised chart?
We're going to get a revised chart.
Actually...
I'm going to go, I'm going to go over it with... I'm going to go, I'm going to go over it with bookkeeper to the supervisor.
I just sent this to you, with the exception of the grade three blank that I put in. So what I just sent to you a little while ago, about 20 minutes ago, is this chart, except I did take out the ZBA person, and I didn't have a grade three. So I'll resend this to you if there's no other changes. And you'll see that there's a date down at the bottom, it'll say December 14, 2016, at whatever we put in.
Put the time in.
Yeah, you have to when you're doing it like this.
No, good job, I think this is a-
It's hard.
It's real close to right.
I think it's a great step.
Thank you. It feels good, it is a good step.
Yep.
We have a little bit farther to go, but I think, you know, we can do it in, thank you. Alan and Michael.
So we're going into executive session now?
Wait, 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 do we have another meeting this year? This is it?
No, this is it. You do this at your annual organizational meeting?
I want to see, let's, I think we have to come back from the executive session and take an action, but you wanted to, you want to wait until then?
Oh, I only had a small thing to say. I forgot to mention this the last time. Earlier this year, over the summer, we had Rhinebeck at Home come in, as you all may recall, to talk about the senior van transportation services more broadly for seniors in Rhinebeck. And they had laid out a proposal to the town board in which they agreed they would research the needs and possibilities and resources for seniors in the area of transportation services. They had expected to have, they had hoped, I should say, to have something by the end of the year. And I had emailed Nyla last week to ask her if she would like to come in, if she was ready to come in and give a presentation to the board on their findings. And she informed me that the task was larger than they had anticipated. They are still working on it, but that she was not prepared yet to come in. She didn't have enough answers or information for the board yet. So I just wanted to make that known, it's the last bit of what I was working on, that, you know, I was hoping to tie up everything that I had been working on, so-
We know where to find you.
Yeah, yeah, so that's it.
We know where to find you. We will miss you, and we're going to be that long.
Thank you, me too.
We're going to be here in a different capacity, so we don't need to say goodbye.
No, no. You'll see more of me, actually.
Yes, we will, we will. Thinking of all these other things you can do.
So long, everybody.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss an issue related to collective bargaining, an issue that could be a potential lawsuit. May I have a second?
Second.
We'll be back. Okay, thank you, we're back from our executive session. Elaine, you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, regarding the two contracts that were caught much later, at very high expense to the town. It sounds like there might be a line of communication that's missing. Like, is there some way, after the union contracts change?
I just said, we have to hire Michael to come in and sit down with our bookkeeper and our health insurance, whatever benefits are involved.
But every time there's a contract change, that needs to happen.
Yep, it'll take an hour.
Right, exactly, and it needs to. I mean, it costs a lot less to do that than it does to catch these things years later.
Absolutely, very routine. So we're gonna move to send this letter?
Sure, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to send the letter correcting the insurance, health insurance premium error to the employee retiree, if that question.
I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We're sending it certified or?
Yeah, I think you should send it certified, return receipt requested.
Yeah. John, you got the, this letter that you're gonna have to send out tomorrow?
Well, if it's returned, received, requested, if the person's not home, they have to go to the post office.
It's not a big trip to the post office from anywhere in Rhinebeck. They go like four times a week.
What about, for just plain certified, don't you get something back?
Yeah, I think you do. Same thing, you have to sign, yeah. Certified, yeah. Well, no, there's two, there's two types of certified, isn't there, John? Certified and certified, return receipt requested?
Return received request of the available postcard that comes back with a signature on it, but certified, I think there's a tracking number, so you know if it's a legitimate-
Yeah, it sounds like either one, really. Something to show that they're-
Okay. What do you guys want to do about the salary schedule? You want to chew on it a little bit? I'm gonna go over it with, I guess we talked about this. I'm going over it with Shelley, and we'll-
The next time we get together, we'll look at it.
Implement it, or actually, it needs to be on a reorg meeting. Do we need one more meeting, or how do, do we punt with this?
I think we ought to get a clean copy so we can look at it. We could always do it retroactive to January 1st.
Retroactive is about 97 hours of work in the bookkeeping department.
So then it'll go into effect the second week.
When's your organizational meeting?
Nine.
Nine.
Where's that sit in the page? It should catch the page.
Why not just pass it? I mean, it sounds like most of the board anyway is in agreement that it's the right thing to do, and the amount seemed fine. I mean, why not just pass it?
Well, Elizabeth and I are, we did it, so we're behind it.
I think it's a wonderful first step. I think you guys did a great job. That's my opinion.
Well, I would like to take a look at it in a form that we can see. You want to pass it, pass it?
The reorg meeting?
No. This is a salary parity study. It will be for, yes, but this will-
It's almost, what's happening here, John, is there's no names on it. It's just job titles. So yes, it's kind of redundant. They will be, of course, as you know, each employee's name has what they're gonna be paid.
The issue is this for the reorg. We approve a salary schedule, this will not be done in time to be approved as a salary schedule. This supersedes a salary schedule. If we approve it tonight, we can approve it at the reorg as a salary schedule.
That's right. So you'll have the salary schedule, which is a document unto itself, no matter who's in that job title. Then on your reorg, that's where you list everybody who, whether they're paid.
What if we had one more meeting, so Joe would have a little bit? I mean, I think, I'm happy with it, but I understand where you're coming from, feeling like you want to look it over, you haven't had enough time to mull it over.
We haven't even gotten a copy of it that's accurate.
No copy, schmapi.
No, we discussed all that. But yeah, so why don't we just have one more meeting and be done with it, so you can do it before the reorg meeting and have a team?
That'd be great.
Can I just pay my telephone?
Yeah.
Pay you money in the driving car?
Yes. Yes. When do you guys want?
Man, I left my house tonight.
What about between Christmas and New Year's?
Tomorrow morning, when you guys wake up, you're gonna see a new draft that's dated 5:56 p.m. So the one that I sent you a little while ago, about an hour ago.
I may not be able to make the meeting either, so the three of you will have to be a quorum and pass it.
So I'm not gonna be there.
Or not.
So then, well, I mean, I'm fine to do it tonight, I don't have any problem with it. If that's, if that, I mean, I don't want to see the, I mean, if it's possible to do this for the employees by the first of the year, I think that'd be a really nice way to start off the new year.
Make your payroll easier, too.
It-
Can we vote on this, please?
Oh, make a motion.
I make a motion, we vote on it. Pay schedule.
Second.
Seconded. Seconded.
I don't know if you can make the motion in second.
No, Alex.
Oh, okay. It's like, boy, add you, really eager.
Head rule, no, Robert's rule, boy.
I'm sorry, Joe, I think it's, it's almost a no-brainer.
That may be, but again, one would like to look at documents or contracts before we agree to a law.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose, I would like to actually have time to look at it.
Okay. Well, we can always amend it, and I think just what this does is it sets Shelley up in a place where we-
There's no time, we can meet next week or the week after between Christmas and New Year's?
We just passed it.
I understand that, but-
I can find a time to get together with you between Christmas and New Year to go over it before the rework. I'm happy to do that, one-on-one.
John, I'll send this to you tomorrow, too.
All right, I gotta pass it, can we adjourn?
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And good night, everybody.
All in favor?
Happy New Year.